Twenty-second, two thousand and nineteen to order, and if you would, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carrie, could we have a roll call, please?
Sure. Councilmembers, Shippers?
Here.
Spelman?
Here.
Ingalls?
Here.
King?
Here.
Mayor Philkins?
Here. This time, if we could have a motion to approve the agenda for this evening as presented?
I will make that motion to approve the agenda as presented. Do we have any changes or anything? Okay.
No, the only change we may have is if our presenter from our auditing company isn't here. When we get there, we'll just have our acting clerk this evening go through the other communications.
Okay.
Or appointments first.
Sherry?
Okay. Councilmember Spelman?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries. This time, we'll open the floor for any public comments. We do ask if you come forward, if you would please state your first name, and then also write your first name, last name, and address for the clerk. Not seeing anyone, we'll close public comment and move to the approval of the consent agenda. This evening, we do have the minutes from the regular meeting, excuse me, held on December seventeenth, along with the minutes from the closed session that was held on December seventeen.
Support.
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries. It takes us to communications for this evening. You made it safely.
Yes. So, thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. Joe Verlin from Gaybridge and Company is here this evening to provide us with a summary of our audit.
Good evening. I would like to thank the council for allowing us to continue serving as your audit firm. It very much is a pleasure working with the city staff. They do a wonderful job of providing us with the information that we need in order to be able to conduct the audit. It was a very smooth process, few, if any, adjusting journal entries, and it's a one-hundred-and-eighty-page report. A lot of effort goes into it, not only from the Finance Department, but multiple department heads are involved in pulling this information together. The city goes above and beyond. It's a financial reporting requirements. Not only does the city have its financial statements audited, but it goes the extra, goes through the extra effort of putting together what's called a comprehensive annual financial report. What that means is we take the basic financial statements, the audit report, and then the city puts together in an introductory letter that explains some of the significant accomplishments the city has achieved during the year under audit, and then it also includes a statistical section, which has about thirty pages of ten-year trend information with regard to net position and fund balance of the city, just to give readers additional, more transparency to the readers. It provides a significant amount of detail, you know, tax-based demographics, a lot of extra work goes into it. And in the state of Michigan, there are approximately sixty local units of government that submit the comprehensive annual financial report to the Government Finance Officers Association for the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting. Cadillac is one of those. So, less than four percent of the local units in the state of Michigan go through these extra hoops, and it certainly is a way to prove to your constituents that you hold yourselves to certainly a higher standard. On page five, you can see the Certificate of Excellence or the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, and this was the thirty-second consecutive year that the city has done this, and again, less than four percent, I think it was three-point-seven percent, the GFOA actually does publish those results. So, definitely means something, and certainly is kudos to the financial staff and all the departments that put this together. A lot of extra work goes into it. In the one-hundred-and-eighty-page audit report, what matters the most is the opinion, and you can find that on page nine of the audit, and it's the second paragraph down. We state that, "In our opinion, the financial statements present fairly in all material respects the financial condition of the city as of June thirty, two thousand and eighteen." It's an unmodified opinion. It must have been an auditor who came up with the term "unmodified" to mean something good, but that is the highest level of an opinion that we can provide on financial statements. It's more commonly referred to as a clean opinion. It should always be the city's goal to have a clean opinion, but it certainly means something to achieve it, and basically what it means is that the council is being provided accurate and timely financial statements from the Finance Department. Department heads are able to rely on information to make informed decisions throughout the course of the year. Underneath the opinion paragraph, you'll see the emphasis of matter paragraph, and this is unique. Maybe every five or ten years, we'll see this emphasis of matter paragraph, and what this is telling the readers is that, for the year-end at June thirty, two thousand and eighteen, the city implemented Governmental Accounting Standboard Statement Number Sixty-eight, which is the new retiree healthcare or the OPEB reporting standard. So, we've been talking about it for a couple of years. It used to be included, these numbers used to be included in required supplemental information in the back end of the audit report. Now, we're taking those numbers and we're moving them to the statement of financial position, just to make sure that readers understand what the impact of the retiree healthcare is. Cadillac did have to absorb an additional one-point-three million dollars of liability as a result of that standard, which is the reason that we want to point it out in the opinion or in the auditor's report, but I will say, and we'll see later on in the report, you guys are actually in a very stable position in terms of the OPEB, the impact that OPEB has had on you compared to other local units of government. You guys are, have been prudent, setting aside dollars. Most of our local units are not in the shape that the city of Cadillac is. Next, if you turn to page twelve, we get into the Management Discussion and Analysis section of the audit report. I would think of this as being the, kind of, the Reader's Digest version of the entire audit, so rather than reading all through, through all one-hundred-and-eighty pages, if you're looking just for a quick snapshot of what happened during the past year, this is probably the best place to take a look. So, here we see financial highlights. It gives us some comparative data, so we can see how the city did in two thousand and eighteen compared to two thousand and seventeen, just to give you some historical context and provide some trends, and it also explains how all of these financial statements in the one-hundred-and-eighty pages articulate and relate to each other. So, I'll start by walking through the financial highlights on page twelve. The first bullet point shows that the city's net position was thirty million, nine-hundred-and-eighty-four-thousand-six-hundred-three dollars at June thirty, two thousand and eighteen. Doesn't mean that there's thirty-one million dollars of cash. What it does mean, though, is if we take all of the assets of the city theoretically, and if we were to sell all of them and pay all the liabilities, there'd be about thirty-one million dollars left over. So, to me, it's really a hypothetical number, but we do like to see that number trending upward over time, and further in that first bullet point, we see that number was an increase of about one-point-three-four million dollars during June thirty, two thousand and eighteen. In the corporate world, we would call that net income, so that's the long-term basis of accounting. We're depreciating infrastructure. We're recognizing the changes in long-term retirement benefits and including both pension and retiree healthcare. All of those long-term factors are being taken into consideration, and there was an overall increase of one-point-three more, one-point-three-four million dollars. Second bullet point down, now we've flipped to the modified accrual or the short-term basis of accounting, and we're looking just at the governmental funds of the city, and at June thirty, two thousand and eighteen, the fund balances were seven million, seven-point-seven million dollars, and that was a decrease of six-hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand-three-hundred-twenty-one dollars. I would think of that as being cash out exceeded cash in during June thirty, during the year-end at June thirty, two thousand and eighteen, by about six-hundred-and-sixty thousand, but that was very much intentional. There were unspent bond proceeds in the city's Special Assessment Capital Projects Fund, which were spent down during the year. That led to capital outlay expenditures, more or less one-time in nature, of about one-point-one-two million dollars, but for that, all the other governmental funds had an increase of four-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars. So, and more, most importantly, the general fund did have an increase of over two-hundred-thousand dollars. We'll get to that in an ensuing page. If you skip down two more points, we can see that the general fund has unassigned fund balance of one million, four-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand-four-hundred-ninety-one dollars at June thirty, two thousand and eighteen. If we take that number divided by the annualized expenditures of the city, it's about twenty-two-point-eight percent, and the Government Finance Officers Association recommends having two months' worth of reserves, which is about seventeen percent. Cadillac's at twenty-two-point-eight percent. So, general fund is in very stable condition at June thirty, two thousand and eighteen. And then the last bullet point shows that the city stayed on track and paid down one, just over a million dollars of its long-term debt. So, no new debt was issued, about a million dollars was paid down during the course of the year as a result of just meeting the continuing, ongoing debt service obligations. So, now, if you turn to page sixteen, we get a look at the comparative assets and liabilities for the past two years of the city. We're still in the Management Discussion and Analysis section, and if you look two rows up from the bottom in the total column, in the far, two right columns, the unrestricted net position had a deficit at June thirty, two thousand and seventeen of one-point-nine million. Even after implementing the OPEB standard, the city was able to get to the point where it's reporting a positive unrestricted net position across all of its funds or all of its activities at June thirty, two thousand and eighteen, which is very rare for any of our local units that have a defined benefit retiree healthcare plan. So, you guys are in very stable condition. When we look at the general fund and we look at all of the funds as a whole, and then when we, when we cobble together all the governmental activities and business-type activities, the city is still reporting a positive net position. Two-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand, not a huge number, but still, it's positive, and that's a very good sign. In that number is one-point-three-seven-eight million dollars of the, for net, the net OPEB liability, and about five-point-two million dollars for the city's net pension liability. So, even with, even after withstanding those, that number remains positive. So, definitely a sign of prudent financial management over the years. If you turn now to page seventeen, we get a look at the revenues and expenses for each of the last two years of the city, for the governmental activities, business-type activities, and then the total columns on the far two right, and in two thousand and seventeen, the city had a decrease in its net position of about two-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars. That number improved to a favorable one-point-three million dollars in two thousand and eighteen. A lot of that had to do with improved market performance, which really benefited the city's net pension liability and OPEB liabilities, because those assets performed at a high level that actually, if you looked, the public safety expenses decreased by about one-point-three million. A lot of that had to do with some healthy market gains, in particular with that police and fire pension plan, but still, the city did have a very significant and positive change in its net position during the year-end at June thirty, two thousand and eighteen, especially when comparing it to the previous year. Now, if you turn all the way to page twenty-six, we get to the fund financial statements of the city, and we can see the general fund, the major streets fund, and the special assessment capital projects funds. Those are the three major funds of the city. All of the other funds get aggregated into one column, but again, we can see the general fund has a total fund balance in the first column of two-point-nine-two million dollars, unassigned fund balance of one-point-four-four million, and I do want to point out that all of the other funds of the city have positive fund balances. A lot of our local units are getting tripped up and having some fund or funds that have some type of a deficit balance. All of the city's funds are maintaining positive fund balances, which is a very good sign as well. So, not only, not only was the general fund doing well, all of the governmental funds of the city were performing financially during the year-end at June thirty, two thousand and eighteen. Next, if you turn two more pages to page twenty-eight, we get a look at the revenues and expenditures of all the governmental funds of the city, and so, same funds, same three major funds. General fund, first column, had an increase, if you look three rows up from the bottom, of two-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars, and major street funds had an increase. The other governmental funds, all the other non-major funds, had a small increase in fund balance of seventy-three-thousand-three-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars. So, really, it's just that special assessment capital project fund, which had a decrease in fund balance of one-point-one-two-seven million dollars, and if you look about two-thirds of the way down, you can see the capital outlay expenditure line item was one point, very coincidentally, one-point-one-two-seven million dollars. So, pretty much, that was a direct correlation, that was the reason for the decrease in fund balance for that, for that fund. All of the other funds were, had increases in fund balance during the year-end at June thirty, two thousand and eighteen. Now, if you turn to page thirty-one, we get a look at the proprietary funds or the water and sewer fund primarily is the, is the one major fund that gets reported here, and we can see that the water and sewer funds, the, were able to report a positive or an increase in net position. Three rows up from the bottom, water and sewer had an increase of two-hundred-and-seventy-three-thousand-and-sixteen dollars during the year-end at June thirty, two thousand and eighteen. All the other non-major funds had a seventy-one-thousand-dollar increase in net position as well. So, business-type funds, we've already seen these, but this, this statement breaks it out into a little bit more detail, so you can see specifically how the water and sewer fund did for the twelve months ended June thirty, two thousand and eighteen. Last thing that I wanted to take a look at, if you flip all the way to page eighty-one, we get a look at the pension and OPEB required supplemental information. I do find this to be somewhat useful to take a look at, just in terms of understanding how well-funded your pension plans are, and the first one on page eighty-one, we see how the police and fire pension plan was performing during the twelve months ended June thirty, two thousand and eighteen. They do have a slightly different fiscal or a different plan year-end, so police and fire has a June thirty, two thousand and eighteen plan year-end. First column shows that the total pension liability was just over fourteen million dollars, and the total assets set aside to cover that fourteen-million-dollar liability equal eleven-point-three million dollars, if you look about two-thirds of the way down, and the difference is two-point-seven million dollars. If we take the total assets of eleven-point-three million divided by the total liabilities of fourteen million, the city's eighty-one percent funded at June thirty, two thousand and eighteen. Treasury likes to see that number north of sixty percent. You guys are twenty-one points ahead of Treasury's benchmark. So, police and fire were stable at June thirty, two thousand and eighteen. The very next page, page eighty-two, you can see that each of the past two years, city has set aside an extra chunk of money to continue chipping away at that. So, in two thousand and eighteen, the required amount to set aside was five-hundred-and-twenty-thousand. The actual amount paid in was seven-hundred-and-one-thousand, so the city set aside an extra one-hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand-seventeen dollars. And then, in two thousand and seventeen, the twelve months ended June thirty, two thousand and seventeen, the city set aside another ninety, an additional ninety-seven-thousand dollars. So, that's the, one of the reasons that the city is performing so well, the extra effort to set aside dollars to cover that liability. If you turn now to page eighty-four, we get a look at the MERS defined benefit pension plan. We see very similar ratios here, actually. So, the total pension liability is about twelve-point-seven million dollars. This is as of December thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen, so we're kind of at the mercy of the MERS plan year-end, which is December thirty-first compared to the city's plan year, or fiscal year-end of June thirty. So, we have a little bit of a gap there, six months, but as of twelve-thirty-one, two thousand and seventeen, the city had twelve-point-seven million dollars of total pension liability to fully fund its MERS plan, and for that liability, if you look about two-thirds of the way down the page, the city has set aside about ten-point-two million dollars to cover that. The difference is two-point-four-five million dollars, and so, the total, or the net pension liability for the MERS plan comes in at two-point-four-five million. If we take the total assets and divide it by the total liabilities for MERS, coincidentally, the city's at eighty-one percent funded. So, again, another twenty-one points better than what the Treasury benchmark has been set. And if you turn now to page eighty-six, we get a look at the OPEB, very similar schedules. Ultimately, all of these schedules are going to have ten years' worth of comparative data. This was the fifth year of the new pension reporting standard, so we have five years of comparative data for the pension, and now we have one year of data for the OPEB. Nine years from now, we will have ten years of comparative data, so you can see the long-term trend. But here, for the OPEB, you can see the total OPEB or retiree healthcare liability is four-point-nine million dollars, or was four-point-nine million dollars at June thirty, two thousand and eighteen, compared to assets of three-point-five million, leaving a net OPEB liability of almost one-point, or one-point-three-seven-eight million dollars. And the city is seventy-two percent funded. Most of our local units are zero percent funded, so you guys are seventy-two percent better than many of our local units. Again, just a, just a sign of how actively the city has been monitoring these liabilities. Really, the intent of implementing sixty-eight, which is the pension reporting standard, and seventy-five, the OPEB reporting standard, is to give more visibility. You guys have been paying attention to this for a long time, and accordingly, you've already set aside a significant amount of the assets to cover those liabilities down the road. So, you guys are in very good shape. It's nice to deliver a message where we don't have a, you know, fifty-million-dollar deficit net position. It's nice to actually have some positive numbers to take a look at. So, those are the highlights I wanted to cover, and I'm more than happy to answer any further questions the council might have.
So, it doesn't sound like you see any areas of concern?
You guys are in much better shape than a lot of our local units, for sure.
Nothing that we need to work on?
In terms of the hot, the hot buttons, you know, a lot of the local units are really taking a close look at the pension and OPEB. You guys are right on track, you know, that statewide, that's become a big concern with a lot of our local units, and you guys are right on top of it.
Wonderful. Thank you.
If I may add, just for the public's information, the entire report is available on our website. It's about a hundred and ninety pages, give or take. W-W-W dot Cadillac dash M-I dot net.
Save the trees.
Yes.
Yeah. That could have been added really for our benefit earlier.
Sorry.
And maybe a link to it, you know, in the packet, so.
It was sent out to us.
It was emailed. I was looking for it.
Yeah, it was sent out to us.
But we could have resent it.
Yeah, but it's okay. It's okay.
When was it sent?
A week or two ago, a couple weeks ago?
Yeah, right after New Year's.
I apologize.
Oh, no.
There's a lot going on. It's okay.
We send you tons of stuff, so.
Yeah, you do.
Thank you for making the trip.
Yep, glad to be here.
Thank you.
And half the time, the computers don't work.
Yeah. Right? I was using my phone.
Councilmember Kings, it's still updating for the last hour.
Okay. I have another thing here, if you want. I got, I'm double loaded.
I'm going off Robert Ann.
Sure, otherwise, you can look at my iPad or my.
Okay, so that was all of our communications for this evening, and that'll take us now to some appointments.
Carrie?
Yes, we have an appointment before you for the Board of Review, James Walker. James Walker's indicated his interest in being appointed to serve on the Board of Review as a third ward representative. It's recommended that James Walker be appointed to the Board of Review for a two-year term expiring on January twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one, and his application is attached.
Is he, is he here? He's not here.
No, he's not here.
No.
That's good.
I know we're happy to have people on the Board of Review.
Especially on that.
Having a quorum and having to send out a thousand dollars with the mail again, so it's nice to have.
Yeah, so would someone like to make that motion?
Yep, I'll make a motion to appoint James Walker to, as a regular member, wait a second. No, wait, where am I?
We, we missed A, but that's okay.
It's on B.
Okay, it's on B, okay. I'll approve the appointment of James Walker to the Board of Review for a two-year term to expire on January twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one.
Support.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries.
And we'll go back up to A, which is to make the City Council regular and alternate appointments accordingly.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll do that again.
You'll still continue?
So, I'm not on any other boards except for that, this one that I was on last year, so.
Thank you. And then the alternate?
T.I.'s the only one not on board if Sherry's still on.
So, I think you were the alternate before.
The Board of Review has to not be on the other city boards.
Does the Board of Review meet during the day, school hours?
They do. They meet in March. We still will have a quorum, even if the council member is absent, but they meet March fifth in the morning, the eleventh all day, the thirteenth in the late afternoon and into the evening, and then they'll have a meeting in July and December typically in the morning on those days as well.
So, with the appointment of Mr. Walker, even if Robert's not there, we would still have a quorum without you missing work?
Because I, I didn't work from September to January, so I have no days that I can take, so.
During the school year?
During the school year. Which March is the school year? But, you know, seems, if you just need somebody, somebody on there, but if, as long as you have a quorum, even if Robert can't be there.
I think that we will have.
Okay, all right.
Okay, would someone like to make that motion?
I will move to appoint Robert Ingalls as the regular member and T.I. Shippers as the alternate member of the Board of Review for a one-year term to expire on January twenty-two, two thousand and nineteen.
Councilmember Shippers?
Nobody's supported.
Needs to be supported.
Oh, I thought he did, sorry.
Support.
Okay, Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries.
All right, and C., Carrie?
Yep, the next, we have a reappointment coming before you for the Zoning Board of Appeals, Louis Nichols. He's indicated his interest in being reappointed to serve on the Zoning Board of Appeals. Louis Nichols has served on the Zoning Board of Appeals since nineteen ninety-two, which is an impressive twenty-seven years. It's recommended that he be reappointed to the Zoning Board of Appeals for another three-year term expiring on January first, two thousand and twenty-two.
Wow, that's amazing.
I'll make that motion to approve the reappointment of Louis Nichols to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a three-year term to expire on January first, two thousand and twenty-two.
Support.
Councilmember Spelman?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries.
The next one we have is a reappointment, again, to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Sherry Alt has indicated her interest in being reappointed to serve on the Zoning Board of Appeals. Sherry has served on the Zoning Board of Appeals for fifteen years, and she was originally appointed in two thousand and four. It's recommended that Sherry Alt be reappointed to the Zoning Board of Appeals for another three-year term expiring on January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Okay, I will make that motion to approve the reappointment of Sherry Alt to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a three-year term to expire on January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Support.
Councilmember Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries.
The last one we have is a reappointment to the Planning Commission. John Putvin Jr. has expressed his interest in continuing his service to the Planning Commission for another three-year term. He has served an impressive twenty-one years on the Planning Commission, and he was originally appointed in nineteen ninety-eight. It's recommended that John Putvin Jr. be reappointed to the Planning Commission for another three-year term expiring on January twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-two.
And it's important to note that John is the chairman of the Planning Commission.
Does a wonderful job.
We really appreciate his service in that capacity. I'll make a motion to approve the reappointment of John Putvin Jr. to the Planning Commission for a three-year term expiring January twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two.
Support.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries. So, then it moves us to the, in the agenda, to the City Manager's Report for this evening.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. The one and only item under the Manager's Report this evening is in regards to fiber-optic cable installation. I'm going to ask Owen Roberts, our Director of Finance, to introduce this item in much more detail, but before he does so, it's important for members of the council and the more detail, but before he does so, it's important for members of the council and the public to know that when we're talking about fiber and connectivity, one of the primary reasons why is because several of the city's key facilities are currently not connected. We're unable to, as for instance, even just dial a direct extension to connect to like our Public Works Department. This is going to help us alleviate some of those issues, especially when it comes to access of pushing and receiving big chunks of data and overall connectivity to our city network. Owen?
Sure, thanks. Got to give also credit, Jeff and I worked together on this for a long time now, so we've had a bunch of meetings with Merit. This actually started back in early 2017 when we had gotten contacted by Merit, and they wanted to basically at the time provide us internet service. And it would have been via fiber optics, which, you know, obviously has some significant advantages just in terms of bandwidth and access and even stability at times. And so what they had offered is if we had signed a five-year term on that internet service, that they would waive the installation fees, and they were at the time going to connect us with a stub of the fiber line that's down Lake Street, about a quarter of a mile, a little less than a quarter of a mile. And so we thought that sounded great at the time, and so we signed on, and the construction costs were going to be about $17,000, and they had agreed to waive that. Well, in the ensuing couple of years now, as the jail has been built, and Merit actually has fiber out on Crosby Road, and so they were working with the county to get underground fiber from the jail to the courthouse. So as part of our discussions with Merit, they had asked if we were interested in partnering with them and the county, if there would be any advantages for us to do that. So we started to think about and take a look at what kind of opportunities that might present to us, knowing that it wouldn't at that point be free, but what might be worth investing some additional city dollars in. And so as part of that, we had also talked to our IT provider about the opportunity to do a wireless project, and to do that, we would need some infrastructure on the water tower, which is the kind of highest, obviously, point and can see every single city facility. So we tried to kind of marry those two together a little bit in our talks with both the county and with Merit. And what we've come up with, and we did talk about this incidentally at the budget work session, even way back in April, I think, and glad to say that the estimated costs at that time were $62,000, and it's still the same at this point. What this initial phase of the project will get us is underground conduit and fiber strands, both now, what we weren't getting before, we were just getting the bare minimum needed to provide us internet. Now we'll get more, we'll get 12 strands of fiber from City Hall underground through conduit all the way to a splice point up kind of by the courthouse, and then we will also have conduit up to the water tower. There'll be a small additional charge to pull and splice that fiber, but they didn't have that designed yet, but they tell me it should be less than $5,000. That's going to come as part of when they actually do the work, but that's the only thing that isn't a part of what we're looking at tonight. So phase two then of the project will be to do the wireless, which then will have some of the capabilities that Marcus talked about, the data protection, the data integrity, where everything then can run through one main firewall here, data backup, things like that. But right now, we're looking to partner with the county. We'll have underground conduit with fiber, 12 strands, all the way to Merit's connection out on Crosby Road. This also facilitated the project, not at our cost, but it helped, I think, provide a little bit more efficiency for them to get that project done from the county's perspective. So it's a good, I think, partnership in that area as well. Cost-wise, $62,000. We didn't bid this out. This was something that we worked with Merit on. One of the things that they had asked us to do was price out some of the underground conduit. They had their own separate quote to do all that work. We contacted, Jeff worked with a firm out of Traverse City to get some quotes for all that work, and when we got that back and shared it with Merit, they chose to go with this vendor to do the work. So for us, that meant there was, you know, some reassurance that the cost that we were looking at was solid. So for about 900 feet of fiber optic cable, some of which was going to be underground, some of which probably would have been above ground, that original construction cost was going to be about $17,250. So for $62,000 to get underground from here all the way to the water tower, which then opens it up for us to do a lot of good things in terms of our data and internet, we feel like is a really good use of funds, and so we are recommending. Basically, what we're doing then is signing this indefeasable right of use, an IRU with Merit, which is their standard way of kind of turning over those fiber. They'll own the conduit, they'll turn the fiber lines over to us through the IRU for a period of 20 years. We pay them $1,200 a year, and if anything goes wrong, the lines get cut, we lose connectivity somehow, it's on them to fix it. So this is what they do. We think it's a good deal. We think it opens the door to do some additional things for us, and so we're recommending that. The contract approval, there's a couple little things that we're finalizing with the contract at this point, a couple little clauses. They shouldn't be substantive or materially change the terms of the agreement, but what we're going to ask for then is approval of the IRU conditional upon a satisfactory finalizing that, those little sections that we had just some minor concerns with. And then were that to cause any material changes to the contract, then we would bring it back to council for their approval.
And where's the $62,000 coming from in the budget?
From the IT fund. Yep, and there are funds on hand to do that.
And also, just for council's benefit and the public benefit, I want to just very briefly explain what Merit, which is an acronym, what it stands for. It was formed in 1966 as a collaborative between Michigan State University, Wayne State University, and the University of Michigan. It's a nonprofit, and it stands for the Michigan Educational Research Information Triad, or MERIT. They've been in business since then, working on telecommunications projects, essentially working off of, as of late, federal funds. They've built, I want to say, several thousands of miles of fiber throughout the entire state of Michigan to get it wired up, and this is really an incredible opportunity for Cadillac to be able to essentially jump onto that superhighway of infrastructure that's built by Merit already in our community. So, and this gives us the ability of connecting facilities with the latest and greatest technology that's out there.
So, yeah, and since there's a cost, we are asking, just as a point of order, I guess, to waive competitive bidding on it, but we did then get the additional reassurance when they chose to use the contractor that we had reached out to, that additionally had saved them money, and then we kind of affirmed that price then of $62,000 after that, so.
Okay, would someone like to make the motion to support that? Competitive bidding?
Okay, I'll make a motion to waive competitive bidding regarding fiber optic cable installation.
Saka? Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries.
And I'll make a motion to approve the indefeasible right of use and maintenance agreement with Merit Network as presented.
Conditioned, if I may?
Yes, please.
Conditioned on finalizing non-substantive changes.
Conditioned on finalizing non-substantive changes. Thank you.
Saka? Councilmember Spelman?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. Under adoption of ordinances and resolutions this evening, we have four. The first three are all interrelated to one another. Since the packet was put together last week, there was a small change. Therefore, in front of everyone, you'll find a printout. That's this with the pink tabs. Thank you very much, Sherry, for putting that together. That includes the change, and I will get to that in just a moment. This is all in regard to the Mitchell Bentley redevelopment project. This is a project that started quite some time ago, several years ago, between the Cadillac Industrial Fund and the city collaboratively working on a way to clean up the debris left on the former Mitchell Bentley building, just for refreshment purposes. The property was privately held. There was a fire. The fire took down the old Mitchell Corporation facility. The property then went back on taxes to the county, and then the city ended up picking the property up several years later after that default process was finished. And since then, we've been trying very hard to get the property cleaned up and ready for redevelopment purposes. There has been a lot of activity that has gone on, even since the City Council's approval of a resolution of support that tried to essentially put its arms around all that activity. If you may recall, about a month or so ago, council approved a resolution identifying a potential project, that project being the creation of a solar farm. That project is still moving forward, and this evening, you're going to hear more about that. The change and the reason why we reprinted the documents is because the differential in the grant and loan that we are in the process of securing with the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality, as of today, is now up to a $700,000 grant with a $300,000 loan provision. Originally, it was a $500,000 grant with a $500,000 loan, and then that changed to a $650,000 grant and a $350,000 loan, and now it's 700 and 300. And perhaps it'll change again, but it's certainly going in the right direction. Yes, right. So it's certainly going in the right direction. It's really important for me to acknowledge that, you know, we would not be here talking about this project if not for all of the collaborative effort with the Industrial Fund, all of the hard work, especially that Wolverine has put into this project. Wolverine Power Co-op helped create the idea of having a solar project on the site and working with their subsidiary Spartan helped put this concept forward to consumers, and now Consumers has very, very positively embraced this idea. Consumers was planning on coming this evening, but knowing that we're going to have yet another conversation with an agreement for the council to consider approving at your second meeting in February, they're going to hold out for that meeting and hope that the weather will be better for travel purposes. But this is truly a moment to celebrate in terms of getting this development in the process of moving forward. This evening in our gallery, we have members from our Industrial Fund here, Chamber of Commerce, Brownfield Consultant Mac McCollum with Atwell Malby is going to walk you through some of the more salient points that you're going to be considering this evening. For the purposes, though, of making the considerations this evening, you'll see in the council communication, when you can look at the copy that's right in front of you, it essentially bullets what the recommended action is. It's one council communication that covers the three related items. The first item that you're going to be looking at is a resolution for the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality, Brownfield grant and loan. This essentially puts the city on the hook for that process. The second bullet is the resolution for the MDEQ Brownfield Grant and Loan Implementation Agreement. This is an implementation agreement that the city is going to have with consumers for the project itself. This agreement is still being finalized, and so similar to the action that you just took on the fiber project, we're asking for authorization to move ahead to finish it, unless there's some major substantive change. We'll obviously bring it back. Otherwise, we're looking forward to moving it forward to the state. That'll open up the state's process in securing the grant and loan dollars. And then the third piece is the setting of a public hearing for a Brownfield plan that we're putting on this entire site, in addition to adjacent other properties that are connected to it. It's called the Combined Brownfield Plan because of that. So it's all interrelated, and Mac, if you wouldn't mind stepping up and perhaps sharing some of the more salient points of the deal or the package, that would be helpful. Thank you.
I think you covered it really well.
Thanks, go home.
Good evening, Mac McCollum with Atwell Malby, the Brownfield Authority Consultant. As Marcus said, it's a pretty amazing day after a lot of work that's gone in. The council had received a $40,000 assessment grant to figure out exactly what the issues were on that site, conducted that assessment, identified that there was significant amount, 9,000 cubic yards of contaminated debris on that site, and really were a little bit stuck in terms of what funding could be possible to make that happen. This is really the culmination of a lot of work, and again, kudos to Wolverine and Spartan for putting the concept and project together and for consumers for running with it. It really, that private redevelopment really allowed us to secure the grants and was critical and important. So that's a really important component. As Marcus said, that first resolution is required by the state, says that you will accept the grant and proceed with the project if you receive it, but importantly, that's a loan that's there, and they want to security to make certain that the loan is repaid. So they put that burden on the local communities, and we've provided that language in there. They want specific language about revenue sharing and city sources. What we have as proposed as the revenue stream to pay off that loan, it's very favorable terms, no principal or interest for five years, and then it's a prime minus one interest rate for the next 10 years, so 2%, 2.5%. So very favorable terms. That five-year period allows enough time for the redevelopment to occur, for the increase in taxes to be generated and captured by the Brownfield Authority to repay that loan. We've expanded the area to be inclusive in this, to provide as many revenues as possible, and feel confident and comfortable that there will be enough Brownfield TIF revenues to repay that loan and that loan obligation there. But you need to pass that resolution to secure in that language that's required by the state. So the second component, I'm happy to answer any questions about that first component.
Can you, what does that mean, that the area has been enlarged to make sure that we're capturing enough? How large is it?
It covers the Mitchell Bentley property. It covers the industrial property to the west of that area, so it's the facility that the BNP Family Trust are currently leasing out. Also covers the new Crandall Precision property, because they are also going to be benefiting through their redevelopment activities, having a Brownfield on that site, part of this Brownfield, and it covers the former Western Concrete property that is also adjacent to the Mitchell Bentley property. Should there in one point or another be redevelopment activities on that site as well, it would benefit by having this in place.
So pretty much it's the original Mitchell Corporation site that was done from Crandall to Western Concrete. And that will be coming before you on February 18, and that was reviewed and approved by the Brownfield Authority this afternoon.
Does the capture of the TIF for this project take money away from other taxing authorities or recipients?
The, and Mac, you can clarify what I'm going to say, but the capture of the TIF keeps everybody whole as to where they are today, but it captures the increment... TIF keeps everybody whole as to where they are today, but it captures the incremental increase of the value of the property for a specified period of time to redirect it to the fund that is then established to reimburse for the eligible activities that are occurring on the site.
It's just incremental.
It's just incremental. That's right. Keeps everybody whole where they're at right now, provides the impetus to redevelop these properties, provides support to take care of extraordinary expenses, makes investments on those properties, and then once those eligible activities are paid off, all that new value goes back to the taxing jurisdictions. So the second, the second item there is also a requirement of the grant, is that we have to have an agreement between the developer and the city to move the project forward. We've kept this agreement fairly simple. It's a grant implementation agreement that basically says that the city, because it's city property, the city will conduct all of the activities there to clean up the property and present that in a ready form for Consumers Energy to construct or manage the construction and development of the solar farm on that property. It also provides, with all of that cleanup, not only just the southern four acres for the solar farm, but the balance of the property, approximately seven acres for redevelopment as well, working with the Cadillac Industrial Fund for that.
And in working with our regional Brownfield representative, the framework of that agreement is what she needs to move our application forward with the state. There will be a more in-depth and detailed development agreement between the city and consumers that'll be coming forward on the same meeting that you'll be having the public hearing about the brownfield plan, and that's identified for February 18th. So this won't be the only or the last time you'll be hearing about that, and just trying not to cause any confusion, but as our Brownfield consultant stated, this one is really a grant implementation agreement, whereas the one coming forward on the 18th that you have not seen yet is going to be the development agreement between the city and consumers.
And essentially defines all the terms and conditions for the lease and operations and financing there. So, the third component of that is the brownfield plan. Again, that is the source of funding to repay the loan and any other eligible activity expenses on the property. The plan was reviewed and approved by the Brownfield Authority this afternoon. Act 301 requires a public hearing and notice of a public hearing by the governing body, the City Council. We're asking for that public hearing to be set on February 18th, and we'll be presenting the brownfield plan to the council at that time as well.
Thank you.
Looking into the audience, I see we have Lori King, a member of the fund here. We have David Miller, President of the Chamber here, and Mike Hamner, another member of the fund, who was also very instrumental in putting all of this together. Mike served as basically the chair of a subcommittee that was, been in business for three years, I think, four years. Ever, you know, before the city even had control over the property, there's been dialogue trying to identify different ways and options of fixing it and cleaning it and making it better and right for redevelopment. So, we're really getting close to being...
Can we ask Mike to come forward and say a little bit about the journey?
Absolutely.
Yeah, it's been, Mike Hamner from the industrial fund, it's been about three years that we, you know, had the eyesore in our, in our sites trying to figure out what to do with it. And as Mac said, a big, a large kudos goes to Wolverine Power and Eric Baker specifically, that's kind of, you know, formulated some ideas at these industrial fund meetings to help, you know, find a way to get some funding for it. And with Mac and with the MDEQ being able to step up and get us a large portion of grant money, and then the balance in any, in any pretty favorable loan amount is, is pretty incredible. So, you know, the idea after about three years of this, and in the next year or so, having that site leveled green and actually producing energy on a, on a small portion of it, and have the rest of it available to an industrial user is a pretty good turnaround story. So, it's been a, it's been a good, good journey, but it's been a long journey.
I just think the exhausted efforts on everyone's part and the wonderful collaboration proves what we can do in the community. So I just wanted to say thank you to all of you guys for all of the work that you've put into it.
Thank you.
Yeah, in the end, it's going to be a great story. I mean, it's a great story now, but, yep, when we get it cleaned up and everything on it, that's going to be, I definitely should celebrate this one. Thanks so much for all of your work, all of you. I can't imagine all the details behind the scenes that, you know, we don't know about.
Right. Okay, we've got some motions to step through then.
I'd go ahead and make the motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the MDEQ Brownfield Grant Loan Application for Mitchell Bentley Redevelopment.
Support.
Councilmember Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Swolman?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Motion, or yes, motion carries.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to adopt the resolution authorizing execution of the MDEQ Brownfield Grant Loan Implementation Agreement with Consumers Energy Company for the Mitchell Bentley redevelopment, subject to approval as to the substance by the city manager and city Brownfield consultants, aside from material terms, and subject as to form by the city attorney.
Support.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Swolman?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes, motion carries.
One more, Steve, you're on a roll.
All right, here we go.
Finally, I'd make the motion to adopt the resolution for combined brownfield plan for Mitchell Bentley redevelopment, and set a public hearing for February 18, 2019.
Saka.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Swolman?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Mayor, you want to make an out-of-board comment?
Sure, but will you come up here and do that out-of-board comment?
You can stick around for a public comment. I just wanted to let the council know that for the Cadillac Lofts project, another major brownfield project, a $900,000 CDBG grant was received by that. You've gone through the process to do that. All of the process is, is happening and developed, and asbestos abatement is scheduled to begin January 29th and demolition shortly after. So that is moving forward. Hopefully, the buildings will be down by March 1st, and redevelopment will begin in the spring, so.
Yay.
Let you know that, so.
Things are just cruising around here.
Drive safely.
Yes, please.
Drive safely.
Okay, Buzz.
What a good night.
Okay, we have one more item. This is in regards to setting a public hearing for an amendment to our zoning map. The date of the public hearing, as we're requesting, is for February 4th. This is regarding Munson Hospital's request as they are looking at opening a 70-child daycare in the McCauley Center. John Wallace can provide some of the highlights. John, if you could, just about the process, where the planning commission is at and how it's here. I would appreciate that, sir. You didn't think you were getting off that easy, did you?
It is introduction.
Yes, yes, it is.
The Munson Hospital desired to open a daycare center, as Marcus mentioned.
I'm just going to interrupt to clarify one thing, that the hospital is providing the space, but they're not opening the daycare.
Okay.
So, okay.
A third party is?
Yes.
Okay.
And had, had the participation in the daycare only been open to, say, hospital staff or something like that, we wouldn't have even needed a rezoning. It could have been open. The fact that the daycare center operation will be for the general public is what caused it to have to go from an OS1 to an OS2. Now, both of those districts are, are very similar. It's just that the OS2 has a little bit more flexibility, a little more broader intensity uses in it than, than the OS1, and so that is what caused the need to do that. There, in the original application, most of the block where the McCauley Center is located was included in the rezoning. Inadvertently, the applicant did not include two of the lots, which really aren't needed for the operation of the center, but have since decided they would like to go forward and file for rezoning for the remaining two lots on that block, as well as the lots that are owned by the hospital on the block to the east of the McCauley Center. So we'll probably be looking at some additional rezoning to get all of those properties into the OS2 district, which I think makes sense with all the master planning that's going on, on the hospital campus. And the planning commission was in unanimous agreement for the rezoning. They thought it made sense. They even recommended going beyond to add the two additional parcels. The reason why we're going back through the process again is that the, we want to make sure that there's no problem with the noticing for the public hearing, and I think adding those two lots created the need to go to at least another few property owners, and we didn't want to jeopardize the action by not having those few property owners understand that these two additional lots would be also going through the rezoning process. There was no opposition to the operation of a daycare center in the McCauley Building at the Planning Commission public hearing, and so it all went smoothly, and it's just working its way through the process to the City Council.
So I'm confused, sorry. So are all the lots in this or not?
No, the...
Those two are not.
The two lots in the northeast corner are not, but those are outside the building proper where they're going to be operating the center. So, the original application will cover the operation of the daycare center by this third party, and they will be pursuing, doing the balance of these lots into the same zoning just to bring all of the property into a similar ability to run uses on this property. Thank you.
So again, we're here this evening just setting the public hearing for February 4th.
Okay, someone like to make a motion?
I'll go ahead and motion to adopt the resolution to introduce ordinance amending the city zoning map and set a public hearing for February 4, 2019.
Support.
Councilmember Swolman?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, this evening in our packet, we did have the minutes and reports of boards and commissions, the planning commission, and the Wexford County report for our review. At this time, we'll open the floor for our second public comment, and seeing no one, we'll close public, public comment and move to the good of the order if anyone has anything.
I just have a quick announcement to make for members of the City Council. There is going to be a second visioning type session that the Alliance for Economic Success is facilitating. This is an update, given the first one that they had in the summer, and what downtown could look like downtown not being defined by corporate borders, but by the, basically, Mackinac Trail on the south side, all the way to Boone on the, on the north side along Mitchell Street. They will be bringing some renderings, and to show everybody, it's January 31st at 6:30 at Evergreen. I did hear that it runs into conflict with NASF's opening night and chili cook-off and whatnot, but I'm not certain if that'll interplay with people that, that come or don't come.
Might a little bit.
Might a little bit.
It's at 6 o'clock?
6:30, and then presentation beginning at 7.
I think it's going to be interesting. When I was down on campus in October for fall conference, I went on a little workshop on the move, and I looked at that unit of campus's stuff, and Wayne BA, who's heading it up for MSU, took us into all these different learning labs and showed us how they do this, and it's, it's using really high technology to put things in place of what, you can imagine what this downtown might look like. It's kind of cool.
And, and...
And he brought it up, in fact, he says, "This is what I'm doing in Cadillac," yeah, because they've interviewed so many people, and they've gotten a lot of data points, so I think it's going to be fun.
Wayne was also part of the project team, six-ish years ago.
Cadillac Commons?
Yeah, for the whole place plans, yeah, Cadillac Commons, so. Could be neat, that was, just wanted to throw that out.
Yeah, I'm going to try and make it, that'd be great.
Okay.
What time is that?
6:30.
6:30.
And I think they said there will be heavy hors d'oeuvres, so there'll be something there to eat if you have to run from work to the meeting.
It's going to be good or bad.
Okay, we do have to go into closed session tonight, so if someone would make that long motion there.
I will make a motion to adjourn to closed session to consult with the city attorney regarding trial or settlement strategy in connection with Wexford County Circuit Court Consolidated Case Number 13-24803-CH and 17-27610-CZ, Terry D. and Clam Lake Township and Herring, or Terry D. versus Clam Lake Township and Herring Township versus City, Cadillac and Hop Family LLC, and City of Cadillac versus Herring Township and Clam Lake Township, also to discuss the City of Cadillac versus Lake Mitchell Sewer Authority, and to invite Jeff Deetland for that conversation.
Support.
Councilmember Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Swolman?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes, motion carries.